With the indulgence of the Planning Commission, members that are here tonight, I would go ahead and start the meeting.
Just two minutes early. We can bank those seconds and minutes for some other time. And, oops, is Mike on? Mike's on. Is that all right? So I'm calling the meeting to order. And I will now take role, and I'm going to go to my immediate left.
Rosheena Farrell.
And then Larry Crandall, who is chairing in the absence of Shanna Collins tonight.
Matthew Petrich.
Jane Garrison.
Thank you. There's a quorum present, so we officially do it at nine, excuse me, I was going for the 29, 6:29. I have a pad on this for, it won't make a lot of noise to bother people. It's called a survival pad. Well, role's been taken, and the quorum is present. And I wanted to note that the three members of the Planning Commission that are not here tonight have been excused, but I think they're having just a little bit more fun than we might have, but not too much more, because this is going to be an enjoyable meeting. We're going to hear and learn a lot. And the next item of business tonight will be the approval of the agenda as you have in front of you for the June 15, 2017 Planning Commission meeting of the City of Sammamish. I take a motion there?
I move we approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
There's been moved and seconded, the agenda for the June 1, 2017 Planning Commission meeting be accepted. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved. Now a request, again, hopefully not too many more requests tonight, but would somebody make a motion to accept the minutes as distributed for the, oh, this is June 15 tonight, the June 1 meeting. Okay, I was reading ahead. If you've had a minute to go through there, are there any changes or?
I have changes.
Okay, we'll go ahead and we can.
Do we need to move to approve it first?
Yes, so.
I move that we approve the minutes as distributed of the June 1 meeting.
Seconded.
Those in favor accept the motion to approve the minutes of the June 1 meeting as provided to us, signify by aye.
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 It seems unanimous, so we'll now go, well, is there any discussion concerning the minutes?
I have discussion.
Go ahead, Ms. Garrison.
Can I interject? Sorry, I apologize. The Commission, I believe in error, actually voted on the adoption of the minutes. In order to have the discussion prior to the adoption, the Commission should have, at the second, opened it up for deliberation. So I believe in order to kind of undo that, can you rescind, rescind the vote, second the motion, and then open it up for deliberation so that Commissioner Garrison can provide the comments on the minutes? Sorry, I, as it was unfolding, I was a little confused.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, thank you. So the Chair has made a decision to go ahead and rescind the vote on the acceptance of the June 1. And we're going back to asking for a second on the motion to deliberate. Is there any?
I guess I move to deliberate.
Okay, well.
Is that what we have to do?
To rescind first.
I will rescind my motion to approve the June 1 minutes.
So move to rescind the approval of the minutes?
I second the motion.
And those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's now rescinded, so the Chair will entertain deliberation.
Entertain the first, the main motion.
The main motion.
To approve the minutes. Once it's seconded, it will open up for deliberation.
Okay. Is there any, is there a motion by one of the members to approve the minutes of the June 1 meeting?
So move.
Is there a second?
I second and open for deliberation.
Let's go for that. I heard a unanimous vote.
I was afraid to. On page 2, under the discussion, the fourth paragraph, it says, "It creates an extra step to changing the land use map." And I thought it should say, "It eliminates the extra step." I thought that's what you meant.
I'd have to look to staff for clarification on that.
So the city staff will take a look at that in preparation to fix that. I personally was not at the meeting, and I believe that the, I think we need to check on the person who, the staff member who made the comment, so I.
It was the difference between using a zoning map for a land use map in this process, rather than having a land use map that you change, so you could eliminate the extra step. You could go straight to the zoning map and eliminate the step of changing, first the land use map, then the zoning map. That's what I thought we discussed. Then, so if you would please check that, I would appreciate it. Then on page 3, there's another one of those. Down on the, under the deliberation, update and deliberation, if you go to the second paragraph, it's kind of near the bottom. And it says, "The Commission asked staff if, by creating an errata sheet, that it would create the ability to make minor changes more often to increase consistency." And I thought it was to improve response. I thought that's what we were voting on, to improve the response time and the response that we gave to the public. So I would like you to look at that, check that out.
We can certainly do that.
The most important idea of the whole evening for me was something Chair Collins said. And it's not, it didn't make the minutes. And it's the reason I voted against the two-year update. And as I recall, and I would appreciate it if you would also check this out, because I'm going on recall here, she stated that "The Planning Commission acts as a sounding board for the public, listening and forming opinions based on what we know and what we learn from staff reports and what we hear from the public." She felt that a two-year update might be an attempt to slow growth by impeding the flow of public response from the city, not a good solution to growth issues. And that is the reason that I voted against the two-year update, and it didn't make the minutes. And I think that's terribly important. So I would like somebody to check that out. She said it so quietly, like she was shy, so I worry that maybe no one thought it was important. Those are my updates to the minutes.
Anyone else? I believe in this case, staff is going to look at these changes, so it's not, we don't need to vote on. So with the suggestions by Commission Member Garrison, the Chair would again look for a vote to approve them, the minutes.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Crandall, I believe the appropriate approach in this, in light of staff needing to go back and look at the minutes and fixing, I believe the appropriate motion is to table the minutes until the next meeting.
As soon as you started, I thought the same thing.
Yeah, and I think that action needs to be also proposed as a motion.
I think the Chair can table without a vote, correct?
I move we table the minutes until the next meeting.
Chair in a second. Good for sure.
Trying to move things along, so is there a vote, table the June 1 minutes?
Aye.
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 Okay. Moving, moving right along, and right before a public presentation tonight, I just wanted to remind, because a lot of us are going on vacation, I believe it's the September 6 Planning Commission meeting, we will hopefully be introduced to Urban Forest Management Plan. And if you haven't read the book by Jill Jones, it's over at the library. I'm going to be turning mine copy back in tomorrow or so, so it's a good read. It's on the subject that we're going to. And outside of that, I'm going to now look for public comment. And I like what Member Garrison said, because what we hear from the public, we take and hopefully provide good advice and direction to City Council. And what you say, as the public members, are as important as what we say. So is there any, the sheet, when I looked last, didn't, I don't think it had a name on it, but anyone want to approach for, this would be for non-agenda items, okay? So public comment on non-public agenda, non-agenda items is, didn't happen. So I think now we move to the presentation.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Doug McIntyre. I'm a senior planner with the Department of Community Development. And it's been a couple weeks since I've seen you guys, so it's, it's nice to be back. I was on vacation in the last meeting. The last meeting was on June 1 when we introduced this topic. I am here with the city's consultant team. To my right is John Cunningham.
Good evening.
And to his right is Victor Solomon.
Good evening.
And they were the experts on preparing the amendments that are in the packet tonight and which we will be discussing as well. A quick note before I get too far into the presentation is that tonight, we are going to open and close the public hearing on the proposed amendments to the transportation element. After following the testimony by the public, the Planning Commission will be asked to deliberate and discuss the proposal. And then there will be a motion sought after to recommend an action by the City Council on this topic. So that's, that's our hope tonight. Hopefully, we can get through it. And if there's any questions about process, please don't hesitate to let us know. So the difference in tonight's presentation is that we're going to focus a little bit more just on the process. The substantive items were covered very well on the June 1 meeting. The materials in your packet are a reflection of the discussion that the Planning Commission had in regard to a combination of substance, as well as formatting and grammatical and other types of fixes, which we thought were very, very good, very good input on this proposal. The attachment that is in your packet with the changes is Attachment D. And that is the red lines on top of the June 1 packet. So it's more clear that the changes that are in this version are on top of what you already looked like, looked at on the June 1. So that's in order to make it a little bit easier to, easier to handle and sift through. We also have a summary of the changes that were proposed, as well as a comment matrix, a comment and response matrix. So every, everything that was brought up in the last meeting was formally responded to in Attachment C. And then the final new attachment in this packet is the draft ordinance, which is not something that you will necessarily take action on, but it is something that will eventually go to City Council. And so it's as a way to just show you what the next step is. So how did we get here? The comp plan amendment process was opened and closed, opened in fall of last year. The deadline was September 30. We had eight proposals that were submitted. And ultimately, the City Council, by resolution, put two of those amendments on the docket. So we are obligated to analyze two amendments under the annual process in 2017. That was done at the end of 2016. And as the middle part of that slide shows, we are currently reviewing the amendments proposed and then seeking the recommendation to City Council. City Council will look at the Planning Commission's recommendation and consider the proposed amendments in July. The public hearing is proposed for July 11, with, which will also be accompanied by the first reading of the ordinance. And then the second reading and hopeful adoption is planned for July 18. So again, just to reiterate, the Planning Commission's role in this process is really to review the docket. The, like I mentioned, there are two items. We're looking at the transportation element first. We will very shortly, in our next meeting, look at the second proposal, which is the proposal to the capital facilities plan. And then ultimately, the city, once everything goes through the legislative process, we make the amendment at once for all of those with cumulative impacts, all analyzed together, which will happen in the fall.
Doug, can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm not sure if it's the right time, but I'll ask it anyway. Having not been here at the last meeting, I think Mary had brought up a point, a public comment last time, about some of the new improvements that have been made on some of the roads here in Sammamish, and would the maps reflect that, i.e. Inglewood Hill Road and the roundabout? Were we able to make those changes on the maps? Do you know?
Actually, that is one of the comments in the comment matrix. And that particular project, the way the background information chapter is put together, it's a point-in-time analysis. And that point in time was in April of 2016, when the city took the various traffic counts that go into the analysis. And so as of that date, the project on Inglewood Hill Road was not completed. And so it's analyzed as, as it stood before the project.
Gotcha, okay. All right, thank you. I just wanted to make that clarification so that we kind of know why and where. So thank you very much.
Right.
Okay, so if you recall from the June 1 meeting, we did present the criteria that Planning Commission should look at when reviewing the proposed comp plan amendments. The presentation last meeting had very detailed and explicit responses to each criteria, but I just wanted to give you a high level reminder of what those criteria were. And then before opening it up for the Planning Commission, I just wanted to kind of reiterate the next steps on this slide. So again, tonight, the public hearing and recommendation. And then this table here has not only the finalization of the transportation element, but also the capital facilities element process as well, because these are, again, both the comp plan amendments for 2017. And then at the bottom, again, in fall 2017 is when they will be consolidated into one action, which would amend the comp plan at one time. So I will open it up, but I wanted to also just kind of put out there a suggested motion for the Commission's consideration. With that, that's all the slides.
So I just have a quick process question. If there were changes that we wanted to make, then we wouldn't move, as you've recommended, we would move to amend, or, okay.
Correct. In that case, the final two words of that suggested motion would be "as amended." Following the proposed, following the motions to amend, and then the votes on those motions, and then.
But do we hear from the public first?
Correct, yeah. So open.
Hopefully that.
If the Planning Commission doesn't have any questions for staff, we could open the public hearing and then move forward.
Do we take questions now, or do you want a public hearing first?
So we could, we could do, we could do it either way, I guess. If you have questions on anything about the presentation, I would say maybe do it now and then open the public hearing. And then if you have questions on what is presented in the public hearing, or other items you want to deliberate, or motions you want to propose, I would wait till after the public hearing.
It would seem to me that when we go to deliberations, we'll have the benefit of the public input, and then we can ask our questions there, because right now, we're asking questions on their, on their presentation. So do you want to save it, or do you want to ask?
I have a very simple upfront question that I'd like to ask, just, I wondered who would be reading this document? Is it the public? Is it other engineers, or is it just to meet the GMA requirement?
I would say it's a combination of all of that. The comp plan is really meant as the guiding document. It's the city's, the city's one spot where it officially states how it wants to grow through policies and through goals and the relevant background data. We, it's our one document that really ties everything together. So I view it as the umbrella document, where it covers so many parts of how growth happens in the city. And then under that umbrella are the implementing documents. So we set the framework through the comprehensive plan with goals and policies and other actionable items. And then, once that framework is set, all the programs and other development regulations and other types of regulations, they all feed into that, and they're all, they all have to be consistent. So I say, I would say in response to that question, that because of that, because the document is that type of umbrella document, that it is really everybody. It's, it's meant for the public, it's meant for users, it's meant for developers, engineers, environmentalists, really everybody. And it is also a way to meet the Growth Management Act, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Garrison. If there's no other questions right now from the Commission, then I believe that we could open the public hearing on the comprehensive plan amendment transportation element. The public hearing is now opened, and I saw one person sign. Okay, so is anybody going to? That's very civil of you.
No, there's no Mary. I'm sharp tonight.
Yeah, so, okay.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Paul Stickley. I'm at 504-228 AV Southeast. A couple comments slash questions, and some for John and Victor, if it's okay to answer, and if not, that's okay. Are all the numbers in this current draft that is online now, are those the 2016 transportation numbers? I remember a few weeks ago, it seemed like some of the numbers were 2014 and some were 16. And I may have missed it, but I didn't see in here where there was distinction between when the traffic counts were taken. So they had mentioned 2016, so are these all now the April 16?
So go ahead and address the, your questions to the Commission.
Yeah, I will.
And then we'll ask staff.
Okay.
Now and then, I did see 2016 entered, but I appreciate your question, so.
Yeah, and it's not, and it's something I could have missed. I was just, it seemed like it was, in the last version, more, you know, pronounced the difference. And I don't have a, I don't have any unarticulated position regarding the answer of that. I'm just curious when the traffic counts were taken.
I'll go ahead and direct to staff and stay at the podium there and see if we can get a brief answer from staff on that question.
Yes.
The consultants, sorry.
Yes, all of the traffic counts that are used in the analysis that's before you tonight were taken in April of 2016.
Good.
In the previous version, there were, was a mixture of counts from 2012 and 2014, so.
Good, and that's what, that's what it looked like, but there's an awful lot of information in here, so I thought it would be good to know.
In fact, one other note, they're all taken during the same week. So it's not like we took some at the beginning of April and some at the end. The idea is to, is since it's a point-in-time analysis, is to take all of the traffic counts at the same time.
Well, that's actually, I don't know whether exciting is the right word, but it's real good to have current information here. That's good. Then the only other question I have, which I will direct to the Commission, is on the transmittal letter memorandum from staff, there's a sentence on the second page, end of the second paragraph, that says, "The, the proposed amendment will also include new development that has been completed in the city from May of 2012 through May of 2016." And that's super good news, because the King County Buildable Lands Report was, I don't remember whether it had information to the end of 2011 or the end of 2012, but it's good to include those, those projects. Is there an attachment, or are those projects listed here, or is it possible to, to get a list of where and what those completed subdivisions were from May of 2012 to May of 16? I think that would be interesting information for a lot of people that have been curious about that, that have talked about that issue at City Council meetings and, you know, public comment, et cetera. So I was just wondering if it was in here, and I missed seeing it, or if it is available, the, the list of those add-ons.
Again, I'm going to, Mr. Stickley, that was a very good question, because I've actually had that underlined in my notes. So I'm going to see if there is a, a list of those floating around from the consultant.
There is a list of those. The city has that. And basically, what it will be is a list of the projects that had received concurrency approval from 2012 through 2016. So they may not have actually been completed projects, but they've gone through the process and basically reserved their concurrency.
Yep.
They got their concurrency certificate. And I do believe that staff has such a list, I mean, because they run, it's, the concurrency is run basically every time there's a new development that comes in. And so there's, that information is available.
And that's all I have. It'd just be nice to have a copy of that list. And, you know, especially interesting, it's been mentioned at City Council by several of the council members to take a look. And it's something I'm interested in, too, is how many single-family residential units have been approved or held their place in line since, since that date, and what's happened in the town center, and that would probably be on the list, too. So it'd just be interesting to see.
Well, thank you very much, Paul.
Yep, that's all I have.
The, my comment on that is anytime we can share and communicate with the public, it's, it's helpful.
And if I could add just another clarification, there's, there's a refinement of that list. So as John mentioned, it was a list of all those developments that received a concurrency certificate. The other thing for that snapshot in April of 2016, we did also have a list of all those projects that were actually developed and occupied as of April. Because in order to calibrate our travel demand model, we actually have to match the counts that we take with the development on the ground. Because our, your travel demand model that the city uses actually starts with land use. It doesn't just magically take traffic counts and inflate them based on, it's not a historic trend model. It actually takes the new proposed land use or the existing land use, generates traffic from the land use, and assigns it to the roadway. So there are two lists. One is what was on the ground generating traffic at the same time we counted. And then there's another list that says, here's some that are accounted for in our forecasts, but haven't been built yet.
And Victor, would that list be available in the background, the transportation background document?
It's, it was not required under the GMA, that this, this section of the comp plan is very specifically matches the requirements, kind of step by step through GMA. It is available from staff. It's part of the model documentation for building the travel demand model that was used to develop the numbers in this section.
So if anybody wanted that, they would just, they would go to the city and ask for a copy? They could access that if they needed it?
Correct. And to add to that, that is, that is very typical. The transportation element of the comp plan wouldn't have that much of the detail.
Wouldn't have that weighty data, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public would like to approach? Anyone else from the public would like to approach the podium and share?
Hello, my name is Mary Wickter. I live at 408-208th Avenue Northeast. Appreciate this opportunity to give input again. First of all, I want to thank you guys for taking the amount of time you did at the beginning to clarify the minutes from last time. I think some very important decisions were made and they should be documented and clarified so that does get forward. So that's very important. Also, thank you for bringing up other public input and I will speak to that. With the Inglewood project, the map that I was hoping would get changed is it's the sidewalk along Inglewood because I believe that was there in April or might not have been poured the whole way. But I was just wondering if it could be updated so it'd be shown there. The other thing is if you have a road that's under major construction and closed and bouncy, it almost seems reasonable to put an asterisk or a footnote so the data that's recorded for that, you know, one, two, three years from now, people know, oh, well, the numbers on Inglewood, which are 9,900 by Safeway and 10,200 by the Parkway, those may have been impacted by the fact that it was being constructed at the time or something or other. Also, just for clarity, I did have the same question that Paul Stickley did about what were the data numbers. So thanks for clarifying that it is April 2016 data. So as a user on page T25, background figure T-7, the average weekday daily traffic, the way I, as an idiot user of this, would use is I would look down by Izua and see 35,000 down to almost 17,000 cars to 11,500 to 10,500. About the middle of the plateau, it's 10,020. Also there, it's 13,000 by Inglewood and 18,680 as you go up along the Lake Road. So that's how I would read that as a lay user. And so if I wanted to know what the traffic was on a road, I would do that. And Nancy Anderson had brought up in the last meeting, she had seen the 2012, 2014, all the red lines. We knew the 2016 data was going in. And I believe she asked or made a request that maybe that data could be saved away in a appendix or something for comparison. Because if I just see a road as black number, but I don't know what it was before or what it's going to be, it's just kind of a number where if you have a pattern, you kind of need one, two, three to get a pattern. So if that isn't going to be available in the document, maybe those numbers could be available some other way to the public. And the reason I'm bringing it up is between the last Planning Commission meeting and this one, there was a city council meeting where there had also been an offsite meeting that I don't know anything about and intend, but I understand the numbers were very important to a bunch of people who may not have read them correctly. But there was a lot of discussion about using traffic numbers and making appropriate decisions. So those numbers are apparently very important to people. They are read, they are used. And I think you need to think about the information, what's available to the public, where is it available and how is it dated? Like, I, I know in my past here, Doug McIntyre had to chase down a map from the comprehensive plan because it didn't have a legend and it doesn't have a date and it doesn't have a source. And so you don't know what you're looking at. And I think it's really important anytime you put these in that they're dated, they're sourced, you know what they're for and they're recorded. And other than that, I didn't really have any comments. It was just comments from what went before. I wanted you to know what happened between this Planning Commission at last because I was really surprised it was brought up at the city council meeting and those people hadn't come to the Planning Commission and they're not here tonight. So I just wanted to say the numbers are super important to the public.
Thank you, Ms. Wickter. You can stay at the podium and I'll see if staff or the consultants want to respond to the questions right now or later on?
We can respond now. I think with respect to the Inglewood Hill Road project, that project was actually not under construction when the traffic counts were taken.
Okay.
And so the sidewalk wasn't constructed.
A little bumpy maybe, but not closed.
Yeah, there was no, there was no constru-, in fact, there was no major construction of any kind going on in the city. Which is one of the reasons that you sort of choose, you know, the appropriate time to.
That might be a good footnote somewhere. There was no major construction going on during this week.
With respect to the, the historical data, that's really not the purpose of this chapter. As long as the previous comprehensive plan, the October 2015 version isn't lost, then that historical data will all be there. In addition to that, the city does keep track of and actually has a map showing the traffic counts that it's taken clear back since 2003 or maybe even earlier than that, I think. So they, they do have a map that shows all the traffic counts that have been taken and, and they do have that as historical data, you know, in their archives, so.
And that would be readily available without each individual person getting a public records request to get it? I don't want to have to be one of those people.
See Stephen.
I like this map, I'm going with it. It's April 2016.
Maybe we can answer that at another time, but does that help, Mary?
Yep. So are you going to show the sidewalk or not on the Inglewood map if you're showing that visual?
I'm not sure I understand which map.
When Inglewood Road was done, they replaced the water line, they did drainage, they're repaving and they're putting in a sidewalk so that you can connect all the way from the Parkway, hopefully to the roundabout and Safeway. And I believe the sidewalk was actually drawn in on it. That was what my comment was.
Right, it will not be shown in this document because it did not exist at that point in time when, when the analysis occurred.
Thank you both. Is there any other public comment right now? And I want to thank the consultants. I'm going to sleep a lot better knowing that that's the data from those, the dates. And the other thing is, all of us should just take a deep breath and when we come back to this meeting in 2035 to see how this went, you know, that, that's the important thing. Did this work or not?
I'm guessing that, that at least this chapter will be updated much more often than that.
If there's no more, I'm going to close the public comment on the element of transportation for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Now it's deliberation and I'll sit back and turn my mic off and listen to the Planning Commission members that are present, except Mr. McIntyre. Do you think we need to make the motion first before we deliver it?
Correct, the vice chair should seek a motion.
Okay. Then this is a time that the motion is in front of you and we can always amend it. So the chair will entertain the motion that's on the screen or similar one.
Well, as long as I have a chance to ask questions, I will move to recommend that the city council adopt the docketed 2017 Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the transportation element as presented, subject to questions.
I second.
There's been a motion, a motion in the second edit, as you see. Those in favor, sing by, by raising their left hand?
Interject, Commissioner.
Oh, that's right, we have to go to deliberation.
Now that it has been seconded, you can open up the deliberation.
Now we will, it's been seconded and we don't need the vote out, we'll just go ahead and start talking about it.
Well, everybody's looking at me, so I'll start. And first of all, I want to thank somebody for singling, for answering every single one of our comments. That doesn't happen very often and it was very thorough and I really appreciate that. So I don't know who it was, but congratulations.
It was a team effort.
What it tells me is that I, that you're after more editing than you are ideas. So I'm going to try to stay in bounds. I don't know if I can do it. In general, I think the document is confusing in its arrangement. It goes straight from required regional goals, transit information, to an inventory of existing streets and then into all the numbers. And to me, if the public is going to read it, I would like to see the vision first and then the plan and then the numbers to support the plan, then the finances, then the conclusion, and then the statement of wrap it all up at the end of how the vision was achieved. That seems to be the way I would do a document if the public were going to read it. If it was for engineers, I probably wouldn't do it that way. So I, I wish that it could be organized better. On page one of three in the comments, the comment matrix. I'm still having a terrible difficulty with the exact same road section being used for collectors and arterials. And I don't know if it's deliberate, but it, it looks like we're trying to bury the labeling of a street and call it something other than an arterial, when it really is an arterial because we're worried about public comment and feeling about arterials. So we're calling it a collector and it still has the same number of lanes, it carries the, has the same potential traffic load. And if you just change the sidewalks or some little design element, that's not what people worry about. I'm worried about the honesty of that. On page T46, background figure T11, I checked out the sidewalk map for accuracy in a place that I know near my house. Now, I don't know very many of these places, but I do know the ones near my house. And on 24th Street, from 228 to 244, there's a beautiful paved walkway with bridges over wetlands and it's just gorgeous. And I think it's been there quite a while. I walked on it last summer. But it says it's a shoulder. It, it gives it that kind of significance. But here's the kicker. From 244th to 248, it says it has a paved sidewalk and there isn't one on 24th. So then I have to wonder, I only looked at those two and I have to wonder about the accuracy of everything else. I'm worried. The map shows the opposite of what's there. Now maybe that 24th was completed after April 16, or after April 2016, but that doesn't explain that length that's called paved. So then I go to T47, here's a small one, I think it's just a little typo. Under Park and Ride Facilities, it says Samamish has, currently has two park and ride lots and then it lists three. And then on T75, I have to go back to near my house. And this could be one of those date things, I'm not sure. The first item says 244th and it's the intersection of 244th and 24th Street. It says it has a level of service of F. And it requires a northbound right turn lane. There is a right turn lane there already. It's been there for a while, maybe not since April, I'm not sure, but I think the level of service is greatly improved. So I worry about the vision, the transparency and the accuracy of this document. And I, I'm having trouble with it.
Anybody want to respond now or do you want to hear some more deliberation?
No, I think we should respond as they, as they. I can respond to a couple of those and then Victor, we'll let Victor respond to, to a couple. In terms of the, the roadway cross-sections, this analysis was to use the city's existing standards. The roadway cross-sections that you see in this document are the existing City of Samamish roadway cross-sections that were adopted by the city council in December of 2016. So, and Victor, I think, can talk a little bit more about the technical differences between a collector arterial and a minor arterial. But at least from that perspective, the instructions that we received from the city were not to change any current standards, not to change any current city policies, not to change any current city goals, but to, to use those to, to, to update, just the, update the information. In terms of T46, you're absolutely correct. The, those are an error on Southeast 24th Street. This map is the existing non-motorized facility map that the city has. And so obviously that map is incorrect. It has not been updated, my guess, for quite some time. It is in the, will be updated as part of the update of the, of the Trails, Bike Ways, Pathways Plan that they're undertaking this year. And so that'll, that will be corrected. And at that point, I'm sure, once that's updated, certainly could update this figure so that it, it reflects what's, what, what the city finds when they update their non-motorized map. Page T47, you're absolutely correct. It is three instead of two. What happened there is the last time we had two of the park and ride lots out in the county. And as it turns out, one of those is in the city, so we added it in the city and I neglected to, to read the heading there and, and change the two to a three. So that is absolutely correct and that, that should be, should be changed. And then the level of the, one on, on T75, that's really an excellent catch. And I think one of the questions we need to look at is what's in the model? Whether the model has that right turn lane in it or, or doesn't have a right turn lane in it? Because if it does or doesn't, will, will have an effect on, on what the level of service is. So it may be that the model doesn't have that right turn lane in and that's the reason that the level of service comes out as F. Whereas if the model is tweaked and that, that right turn lane is put in, then that may end up not being a level of service F operation.
I believe that is a recent project that was constructed between the 2015 update and now and we didn't get it into the calculating tool that does our level of service. So we were, we were trying to capture those improvements that were made, but it looks like we missed that project.
I guess then if it's the city's fault and not the consultant's fault, do we still get to complain?
I, I don't necessarily, I mean, I, I didn't say that to, to mean that it's the city's fault. It's just that the map, at least that the, the non-motorized map is the one that they have and, and probably hasn't been updated for quite some time, I'm sure. And so.
Well, I just want to complain, I guess.
And if I could offer one more, it is a small distinction on the, on the roadway sections. Again, that's, that's only a part of the picture. The, the main difference between those, although they're the same width and the lanes, numbers are the same, as the classifications go down from, from principal to minor to collector, there are some things that actually make quite a bit of difference. The main one is design speed. So the design speeds of those roadways are reduced. And so a collector can have sharper curves, it can avoid sensitive areas, it, it operates at a lower speed. It's a fairly subtle difference, but it is, it is one of the reasons the city and another effort is moving ahead with a transportation master plan to try to get some understanding from the community about how other road sections might be more appropriate. And as John stated, the purpose of this update was really with existing, really the, the numbers were what was driving it is there was a lot of concern about the mix of 2012 and 2014. And we're really trying to create a sort of state, state of the city in a transportation world for that snapshot of 2016 based on current policies and current standards. Here's how your policies say things are working. And part of that, I think the benefit of that is if there are things that we see, like what we'd like to see, a broader range of street sections, that's great input for that transportation master plan effort that's probably going to generate another amendment to the transportation element in the future. But our, our goal here was really But our, our goal here was really to sort of reset from that two thousand fourteen analysis to say, here's, here's a much more current snapshot of where we are. Certainly apologize, because I knew about that project, I should have remembered that right turn lane and sidewalk project, because my former employer designed it, so you can blame me, because I have no excuse for not knowing that that one was there, because I had something to do with the design.
Okay, Victor, consider yourself blamed.
Well, and if, if we're passing around blame, I mean, you have to remember, I was the public works director here. When, when that bridge was constructed and that sidewalk was constructed along southeast twenty-fourth, so I don't have any excuse, I should have cut that one, too.
So what happens now? I mean, we've identified errors in the maps, and there's, there's some minor text issues. I, I'm not comfortable sending this anywhere until those are corrected. So do we need to get a revised version of this with corrected maps and corrected text, and then vote on sending it to the city council?
So the way that this would work would be that the commissioners should make a motion to make the edits, and then when you go to recommend at the end of the meeting, when the chair calls for, calls the question, the motion, at that point, the amendments that get included in the final recommendation, the city will make those amendments as per the direction from commission, and then that will then go forward to city council as amended. And, and to kind of formalize that, we do a planning commission recommendation memo that the chair does sign. So there is another step of verification after that.
Okay, well, okay, well, but to Commissioner Garrison's point, you know, so she caught two errors on a map near her home. What level of confidence can I have that there aren't errors all over that map and/or other maps? I mean, do we need to go through a wholesale review of the maps to make sure that they are actually correct?
So to answer that question directly, the purpose of these meetings is to vet, vet our proposals and to ensure adequacy, accuracy, sufficiency, et cetera, et cetera. The, the process does correct errors, and I think this is proving that that process does work. I would say that we have the utmost confidence that the document is a, is a very solid document. It's great to get the errors out in the open and to fix them, but to that extent, I don't believe there is any reason to have concern for other parts of the document. We, we have very, every bit of confidence in the work, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. I think if I might, what I might recommend that you do is, as part of your forwarding this on to the council, that you, part of your recommendation is that, as an example, background figure T eleven be, well, I was just thinking about that, because it's, background figure T eleven is supposed to be what the non-motorized facilities were as of the April-May timeframe of two thousand sixteen. So I was going to say that, you know, you put the latest, you recommend that the city put the latest one in, you know, when, when it's available, but that, then it's not consistent and congruent with, with the point in time. This map is really just in here for informational purposes. It doesn't affect any of the analysis work that has gone on, so it's really just an informational piece, so maybe, maybe it doesn't matter that, that it's not, not consistent, and so maybe you could recommend that the city put the latest one in once it's available, because it, it doesn't affect any of the, of the calculations or the capacity calculations or any of those kinds of things, so.
And if I can provide an update. So currently, the Parks Department is working on their pro-plan update, which will include an update of our non-motorized facilities and the mapping of those non-motorized facilities. That has just kicked off. It, you know, the city has been doing a ton of planning work this year, and that's one of them, so I, you know, that is, to update that map, we don't have that information to go and do that as part of this update, but that is something that is going to be done here in the next year, so.
Thank you, Kelly. And I will also add that, to reiterate a point that Mr. Cunningham made, is we're not making, so the substantive parts of the comprehensive plan are the policies and the goals. We are not making any changes to those at this point. The data and the, the technical aspects are, are very important to this document, and we do strive to ensure accuracy and adequacy. But, but again, the, the comp plan amendments are supposed to be very direct and not intended to be broad wholesale changes. The periodic update every eight years is that tool for the comprehensive plan to fix and to update everything in the comp plan. The annual amendment process that we are currently in right now and currently looking at is intended to be as targeted as possible, so.
And then could, could the errata sheet that we talked about at last meeting be used for situations such as this, where a citizen or, if anybody could say, hey, I just noticed that this, you know, map is incorrect, and then that gets stuck on and then part of the annual or eight-year update?
Yeah, I would say that. I have seen errata sheets used in other comp plans that do clarify either formatting errors, printing errors, other mistakes, other types of cleanup items that should be disclosed at the front of the document, and I have seen that in the past, so.
Ms. O'Farrell, would you?
Well, I think, for a point of clarification for my own edification, there's a lot of discussion in this document about non-motorized transportation, but there doesn't seem to me, and it may not be appropriate here, to be a discussion of the rules and regulations around how roads are used and how the bike lanes are used. And, you know, just for example, I live down in the parkway, and there's, real estate signs are often in the bike lane, or people are parking in the bike lane. And is this a place, when we're, when we're talking about transportation, that that should be clarified, or is that, that just a whole other statute?
Yeah, so those are, if I'm understanding correctly, those are most likely more related to our code enforcement section of the department. We wouldn't necessarily have goals and policies that would directly address that type of situation, but we, so the commission and council did look at, for instance, to address your comment about the sign code, or the signs. In our update to sign codes, we did make a very concerted effort to make it clear that those temporary type signs are not allowed in, in the right of way, and they have to be set to the edge of the pavement. So that sounds more like a code enforcement issue or a compliance issue, as opposed to maybe the broader, higher level of policy.
Policy and, and, and goals around the non-motor, use of non-motorized pathways and all that will be discussed as a separate topic? Or is that, is that appropriate to be discussed in this? And I guess I'm thinking of the exclusivity of non-motorized pathways being used for only that. And to me, that seems like a, a policy statement, which could overlap with the enforcement of the traffic code or, you know, parking or, you know, whatever. So if it's not appropriate here, and if that's part of another, another policy or another plan, I'm.
No, I think, I think your input is actually great, and I think that the, those types of questions are really related to policy in terms of how the city does plan for non-motorized facilities, et cetera, et cetera. I think as it relates to this item in front of you tonight, I would say that that is, that is a separate item, related more toward the policy side of it.
To be discussed, did the trails, bikeways, and pathways?
As well as when the city does go to update the, the comp plan and the periodic update, and, which is due in two thousand twenty-three.
Try not to chime in too much, because I really am listening, and I have similar concerns that we've heard from the commission so far. We talked about, Kelly's gone now, but the trails update, also could, Mr. McIntyre, could you just say a little brief synopsis of the master transportation plan that's not part of this, but alongside, that will probably have some of this going on?
Thank you, Commissioner Kynall. I'm actually going to defer to our consultant team, who is a little bit more directly involved than, than I am, so.
Thank you. So, yeah, the transportation master plan process was actually instigated to do exactly what you're talking about, is its, its goal is to integrate non-motorized transportation planning, transit planning, and roadway planning. GMA was traditionally kind of heavy on the roadway stuff, a little light on non-motorized. This last update, they did require more attention to non-motorized, and while we're not proposing any policy changes in the transportation element, I believe the two thousand fifteen version does have some pretty significant non-motorized policies about, I believe we even had one related to enforcing non-motorized regulations, so that probably is there already. But the transportation master plan is going to begin a public outreach and community engagement process, and they're looking for exactly that type of input, is, is should Samamish's transportation system become more focused to alternative modes of transportation? And how should those levels of service be measured compared to how they're being measured now? So it's really an opportunity to have a lot of new thought about transportation. That's really the purpose of that. The secondary purpose is also to take the projects that are listed in this long-range plan and to try to help the, the community and the city to prioritize those in terms of which projects should we do first. Some of the numbers that you see in this version that we did not change, there's a table that establishes capacities for roadways. It actually is one of the few in the state that considers the existence, or lack of, a bike lane and sidewalk in terms of how many cars are allowed to use a roadway. You're one of the few cities that already have that, we're not changing that at all. But it's, it's actually the trigger that suggests, actually requires, under GMA, the city to add those facilities to a roadway. Most of the city's capacity improvements for transportations are actually creating complete streets from incomplete streets. It's taking two-lane roads and adding turn pockets, adding bike lanes, adding sidewalks. So that's actually there. That's where those, that's what those segment level of service capacities are doing, is they're, they're constraining the amount of traffic we want to have on a roadway until it's a complete street and can accommodate all those modes.
I would like to add one quick piece on top of Victor's statement, that the, the transportation element that we are looking at is actually, is the background data, like we had mentioned. The policy side of the transportation element does actually specifically address non-motorized, it addresses pedestrian facilities, mobility choice, mode choice, et cetera. And so that, that language is in the current comp plan, so.
This one that we're looking at now is volume two, and all of the policies and goals are for transportation are in volume one of the transportation chapter.
I think that's a great clarification, and it also, probably a lot of people know that I'm very much in favor of vision and vision statements, and it seems like the document that we're talking about now, they've had a state, a federal, state, and county small vision, but the general comp plan in chapter one will have more of a real vision statement for transportation and other items.
Yeah, that's right. I think that the main purpose of this particular volume is to implement the city's level of service standards and their concurrency program. This is sort of the background information that, that is used to implement the concurrency program.
Well, I can see how confusing it would be, because it's very complex, and we have to put all these other plans together to really get the complete picture. But that makes it very hard for us to approve something that is dependent on this or dependent on that down the line. I'm wondering if there's a way to approve the numbers and the charts and not the, not the whole document.
Commissioner Garrison, could you maybe clarify? I'm not sure I understand.
I just, I just, I'm having a very hard time with the maps not being updated. When I look at two things and find that they're wrong, I just wonder about everything else. So I, I think I might be willing to go along with the numbers, which I think the consultants have done a good job with and a very thorough job, but I don't think it meshes with the city maps and the city information that they're using. And I'm not happy with having to approve this entire document.
So a little, I guess, a little bit of maybe background on the process would be that we, we want, we want as much input as possible. We provide the packets, and we, we do these meetings with kind of the work session, and then, and then the hearing, and then we, we seek recommendation. And it's part of a broader picture, that this, this is, this is one part of the process. We, we take this recommendation, we go to city council, we refine it, we continue to refine it until it's adopted eventually. If we, so, so I guess, in response to a kind of a broader concern that, that you may have, I would, I would say that it'd be great to get specific input in terms of what you feel is either holding you back, because we do really, in terms of meeting our goals, meeting our schedule, meeting our process, our, our own process internally, we do need to move this along as, as efficiently as possible, and that is part of the process and part of the reason why we do the two, two meetings, and we provide the packet and ask for input. So I would, as much as possible, like to get specific items from the commission to address, so that we can make a recommendation to city council and continue to adhere to our schedule, which has already been noticed, so.
But I don't see how we can go all over town and check all the maps, all the locations, all the right turn lanes, all the sidewalks, and, and verify that those are correct, so that we can be specific. We can't do that, that's not our job.
And so the, I guess, the short and sweet answer is that we do rely on our experts and our professionals and our consultant team, and we do, again, have every bit of confidence in the team and the work that has been done. And so I think that it would be a shame, I guess, to, to not proceed on concerns that may or may not exist. So I would really implore the commission to, if you do have specific items, please do let us know. We do want to make this as best as possible, but as far as verifying everything, we, we trust the work that has been done, and we trust, we trust the qualifications of the people and the time that was spent doing this work. So I don't want to get too philosophical about it, but.
I guess, my, looking at the amount of time that staff and the commission and the council will be putting in this, and again, reminding the commission that the chair will sign off in a document before it goes to the city council, I am very confident that the staff advocates for accuracy, and I really sympathize with what Commissioner Garrison's saying, but then I go back looking at, I was sat in the audience when we adopted the first comp plan, and I think there, the planning commission's discussion and the city council's discussion was, okay, it's not perfect, here's some of the things to take a look at, but let's go ahead and get this put together for the city can operate or proceed, that's.
Yes, and, and I think that the other point to make on the comprehensive plan is that it is a living document, that we never let it sit, it is continually updated, it is continually revisited, it is a document that really evolves with the community, and it sets, it sets the stake in the ground long-term, but it also responds to changes in the community, and it is meant to, it's meant to be a guiding light, and it's really meant to be this, again, the city's official policy statement on how it wants to grow, but it does, it does tend to evolve with the community. And I would say that while it may not be perfect, I've never read a comp plan that is perfect. In fact, I've read many comp plans that are far from perfect, and it, it is unfortunate, but I feel like our comprehensive plan is a very well-done document, it is a very thorough document, and I think that, that if there, in the case that there are concerns with And I think that if there, in the case that there are concerns with minor discrepancies, we definitely do want to make those changes. But I would ask that the commission does provide specific items that we can fix and which there have been specific items pointed out tonight. But I would like to, again, recognize the work that has been done and the importance of the comp plan and the quality of the comp plan as it exists, so.
I'd have to agree, Larry, with you about confidence in the data. I think it's important that we move forward with the 2016 traffic information and get that into the machine of how the city works. I think it's pretty obvious that our citizens have really been waiting for this information. And I'd like to get that out to people ASAP. And I'm sure, like as you say, Doug, it's not an utterly perfect document. And then I'm sure as we find errors and omissions, they'll be popped back in there. And so I feel confident in the document that we have in front of us.
I would echo that confidence. The, I'd like to strive for perfection, but I think if the analysis is based on solid information, then I'm okay with some map issues or two instead of a three. I mean, that shouldn't get in the way of progress.
And I think what's important is this, it's a comprehensive plan. It's up here. It's not, you know, these maps are not direct, they don't change the current concurrency ordinance, the very significant process of review that every development goes through. If a development occurs near one of these corridors that may or may not have pedestrian facilities, those get looked at at that time based on this guidance and the policies and the regulations you have. So this is not, again, a regulatory document where the map that's in here is going to do something. These maps inform other programs, other processes that then get approved again. And again, to reiterate, the transportation master plan is actually looking at a comprehensive data set that the city collected a couple of years, I think last year, as part of their pavement management system. And so it has a fresh look at virtually every street, I believe. And so they are getting updated. You are correct that the main intent of this amendment was to correct that concern with the 2012-2014 counts and to have a common baseline for doing concurrency management based on an updated 2016 traffic model. That's really the primary objective of this update was to get that in place.
But Jane, thank you for, I'm sorry, Larry. Jane, thank you for catching the things that I never catch. So I really appreciate that, though. Thank you.
I think I would have caught a lot more if I knew the rest of the city that well. I think they're out, it's out there, and it worries me.
At this time, the chair would entertain a motion for, that was on the screen, and if we could have someone, you're going to say something, Doug?
Well, we need, I believe we need to move to make the couple of little minor amendments.
Okay, that's. As a point of clarification, the commission should consider motions to amend as has been discussed. And then each motion to amend will, it can be subsequently amended, but it should, it will then be voted on by the commission. And then that will amend the main motion, then there will be a vote on the main motion, so.
So the chair will remind the commission that we have, we're looking at the motion in front of us, and we have deliberated on that, and we're looking at amendments now. Are there any amendments on the motion that has been, that's in front of us?
I guess I would move to amend as per Commissioner Garrison's catches of the word two versus three in the park and ride information, and then those two changes to the non-motorized maps, since those have been identified, may as well get those fixed.
A second to that amendment?
Second.
Discussion?
Second. It's not just non-motorized maps. There was an intersection map as well.
Right. Okay. There was the text related to the right turn lane at 228th Avenue and Southeast 24th.
Thank you.
I also have this concern about the organization of the document. I don't know, no one talked about that, and I.
Would that be another amendment, though? Should we deal with amendments in front of us, the specifics that we have?
Yes, thank you, Chair, Vice Chair Crandall. As again, a point of clarification on this is you must vote on the motion in front of you prior to considering a separate motion. So I would implore the commission to, if there was no further discussion on the motion of Commissioner Petrich, to then call the question and vote, and then a separate motion, a separate motion can be presented to cover Commissioner Garrison's related but separate comment.
So the chair is calling the question on the amendment that's before us. Is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor of that motion to amend, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any other suggested amendments?
We don't need to say these other ones first. I was concerned about the organization of the document. It doesn't read very well, and I would, I would really like to have the vision up front and have it go from there the way I had outlined.
Is that, are you making an amendment?
I'm making a suggestion for discussion with the rest of the council.
Well, we still need the amendment, though, because we approved the motion, now we're amending it, and we've had one amendment that we approved to go forward, so.
Okay, I would like to amend the motion that the document be reorganized so that it reads in proper order with the vision up front ending in a conclusion, per the outline I already discussed.
Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Seconded.
It's been moved in second discussion.
I'm curious about the impact of, aside from clarity, does it, is this document organized in a standard format, or why is it organized like that?
There was a good, there was an earlier question about, you know, really who it was written for. And the organization is based on, actually, the Puget Sound Regional Council's review form and actually the language in GMA in terms of what is specifically required in this additional work for a transportation element. So it was targeted to make it actually easy for PSRC and the Department of Commerce to review it and find everything they were looking for in order. So that's exactly why it reads the way it does, why it starts with an inventory, why it ends with a financial strategy. That's what Department of Commerce and all the reviewers are looking for. And even while the general public often looks at this, often developers are trying to understand the background behind a city's comprehensive plan. So they have this same awkward but consistent structure between just about every single transportation element. The vision and the policies do exist in part one ahead of this. This is, the transportation element's one of the few elements in the comprehensive plan that actually requires as much detail as it has. The other ones don't require a 10-year forecast of how things are going to operate. This one does. It has a financial component, the others don't. So the short answer is it was organized to facilitate review and to be consistent with virtually all other transportation background chapters.
And this is also a portion of a larger document?
Correct.
Right.
You could think of it almost as a technical appendix to the transportation goals and policies that do exist in the section right ahead of it.
Then I'll rescind my motion. That's why I asked the question about who was going to read it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other suggested amendments? Hearing none, we have now vote on the motion that's before us, move to recommend that the city council adopts the docket 2017 comprehensive plan amendment for the transportation element as presented and amended. And I believe there's, my memory, there's just one amendment that.
Right.
Right, okay. That's the motion before us. Is there, it's time now to vote on the amended motion.
So move.
I would like to have the amendment repeated, please.
The motion that was presented, the motion to amend, the main motion, was to fix the map of figure T46, map T, on, sorry, I apologize, to fix map T46.
It's actually figure T11.
Which is figure T11.
On page T46.
Okay, I'm gonna restart. I apologize. The motion to amend, the main motion, which was approved by a vote of four to zero, was to amend figure T11 on page T46 to change the word two to three in the park and ride section.
Page T47.
Page T47.
And then the last piece of that was the language on the right turn lane at Southeast, oh, excuse me, at 244th Avenue, Southeast and Southeast 24th Street.
Page T75.
And that's on page T75, correct.
I would like to make amendment to the amendment.
I believe the protocol would be to make a new amendment.
I would like to make an amendment to include those three plus a general statement about the vision transparency and accuracy of this document needing to be upgraded all the way through.
Is there a second to that motion? Hearing none, the motion is tabled for right now. We're back to voting on the motion as amended. So it's, those in favor of the motion as amended, signify by aye.
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 Those who have the same sign?
Aye.
The motion before us has been approved with a vote three to one and will be sent back to staff for the amendments. And the chair of the commission will have the opportunity to endorse and sign off on that before it goes to city council. Excuse me, I'm going slow here, so. Thank you, both consultant staff, and especially the council because, I mean, excuse me, the commission, because I think it's great to have the input. Seeing the weather, oh, I want to say excused. We're now open for public comment, and some of your consultant staff might want to stick around for non-agenda items. Is there anyone who would like to speak on non-agenda items? Seeing none, I wanted to, before you go home tonight, mention a poser to get your brain working and up and running. And speaking of running, if you're running a five-k race and you overtake the person in second place, what place are you in?
Can we say the answer?
Sure.
Yeah, second.
Yes, because you overtook the person in second. You're not in first. And now that one of the commissioners answered that so correctly, what if you're in a fight race and you overtake the person in the last place? What place are you in then?
I don't think you were actually in the race.
There, very good. With that, with the power vested in me as vice chair chairing tonight, I call the meeting adjourned at approximately 7:46 and a half.